I'd like to welcome everybody to the first meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court for the new term 2023. I would like to ask, and we've got Reggie stepped out, we'll give him just a second. And I need figure out which one of these lists is the right one. Hey, Justin, which one of these lists is the right one? Okay, you sure? Okay. So what's this? Okay, so what is this one right? Which one do I need? Okay, gotcha. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask, I don't need this copy. I'd like to ask William Spears if he would come up and say the invocation for us. We'd like to ask everyone to remember to turn their cellphones on silent or turn them off.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you this morning, Lord, seeking your guidance, praying your will be done here in these meetings and that all the decisions made will be for the betterment of this county and we will follow your will. We ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. This time, we'll call the court to order formally, and at this time, we'll recognize Pike County Clerk Darrell Pugh. Darrell, you want to come up, or you can go to the podium, either one. For the designation of the court clerk, if you choose to do so.
Good morning, everyone. At this time, I would like to respectfully decline the position of fiscal court clerk as newly elected Pike County Clerk. I have a lot of in-person obligations. Therefore, I would like to recommend Lisa Ferguson as a surrogate to fill this position of fiscal court clerk. Lisa is currently serving the fiscal court in this capacity, and I feel it would be an excellent choice to continue in this position.
Thank you, sir. We were kidding around earlier that as much typing as this job entails, I would just about pay me or you either one having to do it would be a...
Yeah, I'm afraid neither one of us would like it too good.
I don't, there's no way I can get the work done. Lisa does a great job. So at this time, Mr. Pugh, appreciate you, look forward to working with you. And at this time, I would make a motion to hire Lisa Ferguson as fiscal court clerk at a 3A rate of pay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? See none. Jeanne, please call the roll. Commissioner Atkins?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Congratulations. So now that we have a formal clerk, I would like to ask Ms. Little if she would call the roll, and then we'll ask Mr. Pugh if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance here momentarily. Present.
Present.
Here. We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. At this time, I'd like to ask Pike County Clerk Darrell Pugh to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to let the record show, I got the first unanimous vote of 2023.
All right. This time, I would make a motion to appoint the administrative staff in the judge's office. There are no new hires. I would move to hire Sharon Hall as an administrative assistant grant writer to 5A rate of pay, Anita Haney as a receptionist to 2A rate of pay, Reginald K. Hickman as deputy judge executive at a 6A rate of pay, Jeanne Robinson at a 5A rate of pay for executive assistant, and also Roy Downey in the assistant county attorney's position with the title of general counsel at a 6A rate of pay. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Dutch Jones?
Yes. The next item is the authorization for continuity of government document. This is the document that specifies what happens if for some reason I were disabled or in the absence, if I were out of the county and there needed to be some type of emergency declaration. And basically, what it says is that Reggie Hickman as deputy judge executive would be authorized to perform those functions under KRS 67, 730, and 735. And if neither myself nor the deputy judge are able to serve in those positions or in those capacities, then the positions shall be assumed temporarily by a member of the fiscal court as set forth in KRS 67, 740, and 745, and he shall have the powers specified in KRS 39.409. Is there a motion to authorize the continuity of government document as I've just described?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Dutch Jones?
Yes. It would be my motion, let me find this. This is not... All right. It would be, next item is the approval of appointment of emergency management director and approval of salary. This is my hire. It would be, I have nominated and hired Rexel Nee Jackson as emergency management director, and it would be my motion to confirm his hire, I'm sorry, to confirm his salary at a 5A rate of pay as well as his employment. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? Was it Commissioner Scott? It was second by Commissioner Scott. Is there any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Dutch Jones?
Yes. It is, next item is the approval of the sureties for the elected officials' bonds. Is there a motion to approve those sureties for the elected officials' bonds?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is that, yes, sir?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Dutch Jones?
Yes. Next item is, we have Roy Sawyers, who is the administrator superintendent, and Randy Tackett, a board member from Mountain Water District, to come up and give us a brief update on the water outage situation. Jim, if you all don't care, come on up, and then...
You have the floor, please proceed. Randy, good seeing you. Roy, appreciate you coming in this morning.
Yes, sir, thank you. As the fiscal court knows, and as their customers know, we recently had an arctic blast weather event where we had extremely low temperature conditions. The district is happy to report right now that we reached 100% restoration over the weekend, that everyone's back in water. The district is very proud of the hard-working employees it has and commends their service to the community. They braved the extreme cold temperatures to assure the citizens of Pike County who were affected by water outages have water restored as soon as possible. The district began preparation of its facilities prior to such an event, such as maximizing the volume capacity of the water storage tanks by filling them with as much additional water as we possibly could, startup of generators and preparation of electrical outages. We go around and check some of the meters that we've had issues with in the past, and we'll wrap those in insulation to try to keep them from freezing and busting. But one of the things, excuse me, when the weather event started or began, as the temperature started to drop, the district noticed a trend in water usage. And that's one of the reasons for that, because the customers had turned their faucets on to allow them to drip in order to keep their service lines from freezing, which it was also recommended by the news media as well to turn their faucets on. And it's normal for people to do that, but what they don't understand is they're emptying the storage, what storage we have in our water storage tanks and our lines. We have a system daily total of, we range from 3.7 to 4 million gallons a day, with an emergency rate of 5 million gallons a day. So let's, let's just assume that we have 17,000 customers, and if half those customers ran their faucet a half a gallon a minute during the four days of extremely low temperatures, you're looking at 6.1 million gallons a day in addition to the daily total of 3.7 to 4 point, or 4 million gallons a day. And it can't not be physically done. So during this event, the district noticed and estimated that approximately 60% of the water loss and problems were related to customers with faucets dripping and leaks on their side of the meter. The other 40% would be attributed to the district with frozen meters and repair of, we repaired, the good news out of all this, and I'll get to it, and I guess in a second, is we repaired some, a couple of service lines. There were no main line repairs, and the district has been real proactive in water loss and replacing the service lines and repairing the service lines. So we did not repair the first main line during this event, and only made three service line repairs, which is great. The biggest problem we had would have been the frozen meters busting. The district methodically approaches this, the outages, by starting at the main sources of water where they're coming from, and we work from valve to valve outward from the sources. And some of those people that can get on, can get on, may have their water restored back in a day, maybe two days. But generally, when we have a major event like this, it takes five to seven days, seems like on the average, to address those issues. But that's because of those that further out, takes longer to get to. And we had to, in this case, walk from pretty much yard to yard, looking at meter bases for frozen meters or any issues. We even had, some homeowners have water pouring out from under their homes. We had to get the water cut off because it had a leak. Water hoses, they still had their water on their, somebody on their water hoses bust. But during this, the district notified all its customers by, the outages by the Rave, the auto call phone system we have. The outages are posted on the district's website. The staff interest calls as well as designated office phone line for outages. We had other entities that we notified, outages for, that was Division of Water, Public Service Commission, Pike County Fiscal Court, and Kentucky Emergency Management, which they all have a Facebook page. And that's about
So Commissioner Atkins and I had a Facebook water expert chiming off over this issue. And, you know, to the extent, you know, what can we do to prevent this? Well, when you have single-digit temperatures for four days and a wind chill at times 25 below, pipes are going to freeze, meters are going to freeze. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And, you know, what people need to realize too is this was not just something that happened in Pike County. It happened in Floyd County, it happened in Letcher County, it happened in Mark County. Even as far south, I know at Asheville, North Carolina, had 40,000 customers without water because of the freeze. And I wanted, David Taylor sent over an email that I think is important. And first of all, let me say this. On behalf of the fiscal court, I think I can speak for all four of us, the employees of Mountain Water deserve a huge thank you. While most people were at home with their families on Christmas Eve, Mountain Water's repair crews were out working, and they worked essentially non-stop. I want to just give an idea based on what David had said. In terms of pre-planning, on December 23rd, with a 40-plus degree drop in temperature, the district knew there was going to be issues before the first service call, storage started to deplete. People were running their faucets. The maximum emergency capacity for Mountain Water is about 5 million gallons a day, correct?
Yes.
And with the usage, with people running their lines, it basically got up to about 5.7 million gallons a day. More, they were, they were using more water than the district could produce or purchase. This is something I've talked about. David was talking about the oldest parts of the system being Marbone Water District, Shelby Valley Water District, and the Pond Creek District, which were the original components that merged into, formed Mountain Water, were engineered to accommodate an area that was much different than what the system is now. It's been expanded in some ways that, that make it hard to supply the water. You know, Shelby Valley was originally designed to accommodate Shelby Valley, but now it goes all the way up 805 to Jenkins. You know, Elkhorn Creek, the outer reaches of Robinson Creek, et cetera, were not designed, but they're now served. Phelps was designed to accommodate Phelps, but now it serves stopover in Freeburn. The coal service tax projects that added to the capacity or to the number of customers also created capacity issues. On the 25th, it was noted that after talking with Chairman Johnny Dennison and before the first outage, that Pike County Emergency Management was contacted, and Pike County Emergency Management started putting the word out on Facebook about water conservation. Now, I think we put out five, six messages for Mountain Water through the process. I'm not going to go through everything that David laid out, but I think it's important, and I'd be happy to share this with the press, if the newspaper liked a copy of this, because it does. I think a lot of people were confused, Randy, particularly up in Long Fork, because, you know, as the difference, 1.5-mile sections were opened up, people thought that, you know, the crews had left or gone home. But as I understand the process, when you turn one of these 1.5-mile segments on, you don't know if there's going to be breaks or leaks or not until you turn it on.
That's one of the reasons it's hard to predict. It's hard to give a time, okay? If you're out of water, it's hard to give a time when you're going to get back on, because you have to check each section as you get to it. One section may have more repairs on it than the next section does, but you've got to go from one to the next one to the next one before you can get everything hooked back up.
So if you've got to check a 1.5-mile section of water line, not only do you have to determine whether there's leaks, you've got to find out where they're at.
You have shut down sidelines too as well.
And first, you have to have the storage available. You can't let your tanks run completely dry, because you can't find the leaks if you don't have water in the lines. So first, you've got to build your storage back up before you can start, even, you know, going out from section to section restoring it. That's just the way it is.
What does the district recommend if we have another event like this, and we will at some point? Is there a recommendation about whether you should run your taps or not?
You know, it's the public's right. You know, we provide them water, and it's the public's right, if they're willing to purchase that water, to do it in any way that they, they want to do it. But I'd like to emphasize to the public that, think about your fellow man, think about your neighbor, and your neighbor's a mile and a half down the road when you're running these faucets. No one wants their pipes to freeze and burst.
They can also take into consideration of what their problem was on their side and try to address it. If their service line is too shallow, they may want to dig it deeper. If they've got a line underneath the house that froze, they may want to put electrical tape on it to try to keep it warm, something to, trying to make sure they stay in.
Yeah, from what it looks like here, 40% of the line breaks were on the customer side of the meter. Is that correct?
We estimated about 60%, counting line breaks and faucet. Counting the both of them.
One of the complaints, I think, that Commissioner Atkins and I heard was not necessarily the fact that they were out of water, but people wanted to know when it was going to be back on. And I think Randy touched on that. I mean, you don't have a crystal ball, because until you turn these lines back on, you don't know how much damage has been done and how long it's going to take to fix it. One of the things that I understand is that Mountain Water did have, on their website, updates that were provided.
Yeah.
But some folks, if it's not on Facebook, then, you know, they won't go to the extra effort to go over to the world wide web to see if it's on there. And have you all discussed at least being able to put on a Facebook page the updates if we have future outages like this? And I know that's a whole powder keg, because it just gives people an opportunity to gripe.
Right. We're not going to fall into the trap, I don't, this is the board, we've discussed this in the past, of opening up a Facebook page and allowing someone, sometimes misinformed people are sometimes the ones that shout the loudest. And we're not going to base our hard-to-make decisions on sometimes people that are misinformed as to how we have to go about this. We're not going to fall into that trap.
I commend you for that, because, you know, usually, one or two people can stir a bunch of people up with false information or misinformation. I understand why it took time to get the water on, and I hope that we can do maybe a better job of educating people when these events happen about why it's taken so long and why you can't give a prediction. I mean, there's no way, there's no way, you don't have a crystal ball. You don't know what, how extensive repairs are going to be and how long they're going to take. And, you know, you go to the next section, you don't know how much damage you're going to find there. So have most of the, has most of the customer outage been fixed now? Do we have anybody without water?
Not that I know of. Nobody's out.
Commissioner Scott's district, Peach Orchard up on Left Fork of Island Creek, we're going to have to do something pretty emergency, because those folks have been without water. That's been an ongoing problem. I would like to see if the three of us could get together this week and talk about what we need to do to try to get that water situation resolved up there. All right. Randy, anything you'd like to add?
One thing that, that I would like to say is that with any crisis, that there are always lessons to be learned from, from that crisis. And I think one that I've learned is a better way to get out to the, to the people, get the message out to the people. And I think we could do that in the form of public service announcements that we could issue, that if we could get our local radio stations, local TV stations to broadcast these PSAs periodically, like, you know, set a schedule every 12 hours, we're going to issue a new PSA, and, and put those on our local radio stations and local TV stations. I think that would go a long way towards giving the public a better idea as to, as to how we're going.
I think that the employees of Mountain Water did a remarkable job under the circumstances. It was pretty cold, those guys were out working, and I just want you to give them our thanks for their dedication to the people of the county.
I'll let them know. And one other thing, I do want to thank the city of Pikeville and the city of Williamson for working with us through this.
Roy, let me ask you a question. I know that Williamson had some issues with their systems. They have some, some, some breaks or some leaks over there that they had?
Yeah, they had several main line breaks. What they were trying to do is get their storage capacity back and take care of their customers and their fire protection zones before they could, they were giving us some water, but before we could maximize the amount of water we could get from them. That was one of the things that was hurting us on over in the Blackberry ransom area.
So...
But now we're getting the volume of water we need.
Just so people will know that might be listening to this, Mountain Water produces water at its own plant, but because of the size of the county, it also buys water for customers from the city of Pikeville and from the city of Williamson.
Correct.
Correct. And I've always had, you know, been a believer that it would be better if we had a plant on the other side of the county where we could produce our own water. And Randy, something, I think that's something that you've looked at.
We have, when I first came on the board, I was shocked to find out that we didn't produce all of our own water. And when I found out why we're not producing, why we're having to purchase a good amount of water from Pikeville and Williamson is because of the hydraulic situation in our system. Like we said earlier, our system wasn't designed to furnish all the water for Pike County. Our system was made up of four individual water districts that were made for those individual districts. And what we're trying, what the board is trying to do now is to determine a way that we can become self-sufficient. That's one of my goals. Before I leave here, I'd like to have a plan set in place that we can become self-sufficient in our water production. Our plant...
Just, just a mere exception real quick. Just the fact that we have, was it two to three days when you put water in the line at Harlesses Creek, two to three days for it to get to Phelps?
Yeah.
Just because of the hydraulic situation and the distance?
Right.
And then, I know I've had some folks contact me from over at A-Flex in Burnwell, Leckyville, that were concerned because their pressure was low, but that water's coming from West, from, from Williamson. And there's nothing that you all can do about that if Williamson has issues putting water in the line and pressurizing.
Yeah, they have to provide, they take care of their customers first, and then we're second in that.
If it could be done at a reasonable cost, I would support being completely independent from any other system in terms of the Mountain Water customers not having to rely on particularly a district in another state.
Correct. That's, that's been one of my concerns when I first started on the board. We have, we're working in conjunction with University of Kentucky right now. Obviously, we want to do this the most economical way. We have a plant that could probably produce enough water for all of Pike County if we could get it to these outlying locations. Right now, we can't physically do that because of the hydraulic situation in our pipeline system.
Having to push water uphill that far, it's just not doable.
Well, you can, you can add booster pump stations, you know, and that's one of the things that we need to look at as opposed to, or one of the things we have to look at is, is look at our system and do an analysis of our system that's, which has never been done, and determine whether we can make changes to our existing system more economically than we can install another plant on the other side of the county.
And UK is doing that right now.
They, we provide them with information on our system, and we plan on having a meeting in early March, that their people are going to come up here. And the fact they have a team set up that's going to come up to, to our office and start this whole process.
So you think with booster stations, it's possible to get water from Harlesses Creek to Blackberry?
That's what, that's what we're going to look at. I'm not going to step out here and say, all we've got to do is put in a $100,000 booster station, we can get water over there. We've got to get it to that point first. Just like David said in his email, you know, when we first started, or when they first started the Shelby Valley District, the outer reaches of Little Robinson Creek and the pipeline to Jenkins, down Jenkins Road, that wasn't even in the, in the plans, and yet, we're producing, we're providing water there now. We just need an analysis of our complete system to know what changes have to be made in our existing system in order to get water. in our existing system in order to get water to the outlying areas right now and determine what that cost is. And then we, we really located a, a location for a new water plant on the other side of the county. And we have a good water source for that plant on the other side of the county, you know, should we, you know, decide to do that way. But there's cost involved. What we need to do now is determine the most economical cost and then go towards that, that end.
Well, I'll support you. I'm sure the commissioner's going to have some questions for you about the water outage and some of these issues. Do you have any?
No, I don't have any.
All right. Gentlemen, we appreciate your time and just keep us posted. If we can do anything to help get the word out through emergency management, we'll be happy to do that. Anything we can do to help on this study that UK's doing, we're all in on that as well. And I appreciate both of your service. Again, please extend our thanks to all the employees of Mountain Water District for their, their work trying to get the water back on.
Yeah, I've spoken extensively with Johnny Dennison, who's the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. I'm the vice chairman. And we plan on publicly thanking our employees. For them to sacrifice the way they did, I think is tremendous. That, their dedication is second to none.
And, I mean, you know, as cold as it was, they were out there working in it. And they were in the water fixing the leaks. I mean, that's a really hard job and and I think it's, you know, and like David said in the email, the fact that they, they missed Christmas with their family and you have people going on Facebook complaining.
Right.
You know, I think the fact that some, some folks don't appreciate their sacrifice is appalling and, but I can tell you that the court, I think I can speak for all of us, we appreciate the sacrifice that the employees have made.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is executive session. Colonel Downey, would you please instruct the court on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meeting Law as it pertains to the entry into executive session by the fiscal court?
All right. Judge, the public's probably heard me say this a few times, but under KRS 61.810, you are permitted to go into executive session. In this particular case, under paragraph C, to discuss if there's any proposed litigation that you need to do. And probably the primary concern that you have today is paragraph F, is to discuss specific personnel, which will be the county employees that you all will probably be back to shortly higher. Thank you.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins? Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we'll be in recess for a brief period for executive session and return at the call of the chair. Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. It is my motion to hire the following persons for the new term of court with all accrued pay, benefits, and longevity. At the airport, Chad Conway as a 2H lineman. Jeff Lee as a lineman at a 4H rate of pay. Matt Ray as a manager at a 5H rate of pay. In the Trails Office, Jerry Atkins is director at a 4A rate of pay. Cliff Smallwood is a Trails manager at a 4A, I'm sorry, Jerry Atkins at a 5A rate of pay as director. Cliff Smallwood, a 4A rate of pay as Trails manager. In the solid waste cleanup, Kenneth Stanley as a boom truck operator at a 5H rate of pay. Ricky Paul Thacker in litter abatement at a 3A rate of pay. Secretary in the Commissioner's Office, Sherry Skaggs as administrative assistant at 2A rate of pay. Emergency Management Office, Thomas Gibson as a 2H technical assistant. And Connie Martin as a 3A secretary. In the Finance Office, Penny Burke is a payroll clerk at a 4A rate of pay. Jennifer Coleman is treasurer's assistant at 3A rate of pay. Justin Maynard, human resources director at a 5A rate of pay. Bayette Thacker at a 2A rate of pay is the assistant to the finance supervisor. Pam Vanover at a 0A rate of pay as the finance supervisor. Lisa Ferguson is the fiscal court clerk at a 3A rate of pay. Tim Fields is the GIS coordinator and deputy emergency management director at a 5A rate of pay. In the landfill, Ricky Collins as a 6H heavy equipment operator. Larry Hensley as a landfill manager at a 4A rate of pay. Richard Robinett as a general labor at a 2H rate of pay. Adam Runyon is a water truck driver at a 4H rate of pay. Jerry Stanley is a truck driver at a 4H rate of pay. Jennifer West is a scale operator, 3A rate of pay. Kevin Witt is a heavy equipment operator at a 6H rate of pay. At the maintenance garage, Chester Atkins is a welder at a 5H rate of pay. Roger Anderson is a mechanic at a 5H rate of pay. Ricky Blankenship is a mechanic at a 5H rate of pay. Roger Justice is a mechanic at a 5H rate of pay. Jeff Justice is a 5A foreman. James Taylor's a 4H rate of pay driver. James Thompson's a mechanic at a 5H rate of pay. Dewayne Witt is office manager at a 4A rate of pay. In the purchasing office, Greg Fannin, a 0A purchasing agent. At the Public Works Judicial Center, positions that are reimbursed by the state. Savannah Burke is a custodian at 2H rate of pay. Jessica Epling is a head housekeeper at a 1A rate of pay. Ramona Horn is custodian at 2H rate of pay. Jeremy Miller as a facilities technician at a 4A rate of pay. Rachel Murphy is custodian at 2H rate of pay. Flood plane coordinator, Jimmy Kaiser, a 0A flood plane coordinator. Animal shelter, Tanya Absher as animal control officer, 3H rate of pay. Kristen Adams as animal control helper at a 2H rate of pay. Lori Goff is the director slash manager of the animal shelter at a 4A rate of pay. Billy Tussie is the animal control officer to 3H rate of pay. Public Maintenance on the grounds crew, Randy Mullins at a 2H rate of pay as a parks coordinator. Kenneth Price at a 3H mower carpenter helper. Lester Stanley's park manager, 2A rate of pay. In Public Works, Construction Maintenance, Jason Burke is a carpenter helper to 3H rate of pay. William Church is a carpenter to 5H rate of pay. Jeff Haney is a carpenter to 5H rate of pay. Steve Wayne is a carpenter to 5H rate of pay. Sean West, carpenter to 5H rate of pay. Paul Williamson, supervisor of Public Works at a 5A rate of pay. Brian Goff is a carpenter to 5H rate of pay. Public Works is at the county courthouse. Connie Chapman, head housekeeper to 2A rate of pay. Lucinda King, custodian to 2A rate of pay. Melissa Prater, custodian to 3H rate of pay. At the Hall of Justice, custodian. Mary Stanley, a 2H custodian. In the Road Department Office, Fabian Little as the road supervisor, a 6A rate of pay for a term commencing January 15, 2023 for a four-year term. Samantha Maynard at a 3A rate of pay as the secretary. Road Lot 1, Byron Case is a 4H truck driver. William Dotson is a 4H truck driver. Christopher Epling is 6H heavy equipment operator. Plenny May, a 5H light equipment operator. Isaac Sanders is a 4A temporary road foreman. And Thomas Farney is a 3H weed mower. Let me rephrase that. Isaac Sanders should be as a 4A road foreman. Road Lot 2, Paul Atkins as a 6H heavy equipment operator. Noah Case is a 4A temporary road foreman. Gary France is a 5H heavy equipment operator. Jared Ratliff, 4H truck driver. William E. Tackett is a 4H mower driver. Road Lot 3, Scotty Nudumaker is a 3H weed mower. Pebble Roberts is a 4A foreman. Andrew Smith is a 4H truck driver. Billy D. Tackett is a 6H heavy equipment operator. Jeff Farney's a 4H driver. Jeff Wright is a 5H light equipment operator. At Road Lot 4, Ralph Blankenship is a 4A foreman. Delmar Chaney, 6H heavy equipment operator. Greg Phillips is a 4H truck driver. Shannon Smallwood is a 3H weed mower. Nicholas Steppen is a 3H weed mower. Donald Thacker is a 6H heavy equipment operator. And John Thompson is a 6H heavy equipment operator. Road Lot 5, Flannery Blankenship is a 6H heavy equipment operator. Grant Coleman is a 3H weed mower. James B. Dotson's a 4A temporary road foreman. Ronnie Dotson is a 6H heavy equipment operator. Tony Dotson is a 4H truck driver. And Justin Kennedy is a 4H truck driver. Road Lot 6, Robert Booth is a 5H light equipment operator. Charles Eames is a 4H truck driver. Jerry Fields is a 6H heavy equipment operator. Joseph Stanley is a 3H weed mower. James C. Webb is a 4A temporary road foreman. Safety Office, William Spears is a 5A safety director. Community Services, Diana Thacker is a 5A supervisor. On the Road Special Crew, Gavin Brandon is a 2H general labor. Brian Fields is a 5H light equipment operator. Keith James, 5H welder. David L. Kidd, 2H general labor. Jeffrey Lucas, 6H heavy equipment operator. The next one, Christian Mills, has resigned. Bradley Tackett is a 6H heavy equipment operator. Charles Tackett is a 6H transport driver. Ethan Tackett is a 2H general labor. Tanner Tackett is a 2H temporary labor. Thomas Thacker is a 4A foreman. Solid Waste Lot 1, Philip Adams is a 4H packer driver. Connor Addington, a 2H loader. Sean Atkins, a 2H loader. Dylan Akers, a 2H loader. Ethan Akers, a 2H loader. Christopher Anderson, 2A recycle director. Cameron Anderson, a 2H loader. Curtis Anderson, a 2H loader. Stephen Ray Asbury, a 4A foreman. Gregory Blankenship, a 4H packer driver. John Cottle, a 2H loader. Janice Paul Chapman, a 2H attendant. Danny Childers, a 2H loader. Stephen Dammer, a 4A foreman. Brian Dan, a 3H mini packer driver. Dalton France, a 3H mini packer driver. Caleb Gibson, a 4H float driver. Dakota Hackney, 4H CDL truck driver. Jordan Hurley, 3H non-CDL driver. Eric Lambden, 2H loader. Bradley Lane, a 2H loader. Gary Lewis, a 3A foreman. Dylan Looney, a 2H loader. William K. Meade, a 4H float driver. Ethan Morris, a 2H loader. Austin Mounts, a 2H loader. Wendell Mullins, a 4H packer driver. David Mullins, a 4H packer driver. Jordan Price, a 3H float driver. John Reed, a 4A foreman. The next gentleman has resigned. Then Bobby Robinson, a 2H loader. William Smith, a 2H loader. Eric Stella, 3H mini packer driver. Jeff Thompson, a 4H packer driver. Thomas Tackett, a 2H loader. Mark Thacker, a 2H attendant. Aaron Thacker is a 2H loader. Gary Tomlin is a 4H packer driver. Austin Turnmeyer, 3H non-CDL driver. Dalton Waller, 2H loader. Michael Ward, a 4H packer driver. Clyde Witt, a 3H mini packer driver. Danny Witt's a 3H float driver. Lawrence Wilkinson, a 3H mini packer driver. Damon Wright is a 2H loader in the solid waste office. Bruce Anderson, 2H enforcement officer. Greg Blankenship, a 2A administrative assistant. Stephanie Cleavage, a 5A office manager. Donette Collier, 3H customer service rep. Kevin Miracle, 2A enforcement officer. Chuck Morley, 5A solid waste manager. Pam Robinson, 4H customer service rep. Savannah Shoemaker, 3H cashier. Solid Waste Transfer, Willis Brand, a 3H transfer attendant. Richard Mullins, a 4H driver. Timmy Oris, a 4H driver. And Jonathan Williamson, a 4H driver. The Occupational Tax Office, Jeffrey Coleman at a 4A enforcement officer position. And then Donetta Rutherford is a 3A data manager. 911 Office, Charles J. Childers is a 6A 911 coordinator. Just anything I missed on those? All right. So those are my personnel motions. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? See you now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is for approval to establish a schedule for the fiscal court meetings. And I'll be happy to change you my recommendation. I think typically the judge proposes this and I think the court acts on it. But the schedule that I proposed was the first Tuesday of the month at 5:30 PM and the third Tuesday of the month at 10:00 AM. We can do them all morning, we could do them both evening, we could do them on other days, we could do them on the, you know, the second and fourth, I mean, whatever would be the preference of the court.
Like it is, first one of the evenings and the third one of the morning, that's fine with me.
Mr. Scott, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
If you have a different preference, I mean, we can, we'll do whatever you all want to do.
Both the evenings. I'll do both of them evenings. It don't make any difference to me. I mean, I'm available all the time.
What we'll just do is we'll leave them like this right here and if we need to change them, then, you know, we can always cancel one, have a special meeting if we have to.
Sounds good.
All right. So I'll make a motion to establish the current, the regular meetings of the Pike County Fiscal Court for the next term as the first Tuesday of the month at 5:30 PM and the third Tuesday of the month at 10:00 AM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? See you now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is establishing the operating hours of the courthouse. The current offers, office hours are 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Does anybody think that needs to be modified or? I would move that the, we establish the current, the operating hours for the next term of the court, for the Pike County Courthouse is 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any other question or discussion? See you now, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Next item's treasures business. Mr. Stacy, any business, sir? All right. All right. Next item is the, I'm at this time, call on our newly elected commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner 1, Ronald Scott. Commissioner, would you like to address the public and introduce yourself and have the floor, sir?
Yeah. If anybody else don't know, my name's Ronald Scott, I live over at Johns Creek. And the reason I run for this office, I'm for the people of Pike County. And I really appreciate everybody giving me. Thank you.
Look forward to working with you and we'll get a lot of stuff done next four years.
Sure.
District number 2, Kleiner, Bubby Atkins.
Yeah. Ones of you don't know me, I'm Bubby Atkins and I'm going to be, it's a privilege to be here to help the people of this county and I'll do what I can for the people and the workers of this county. Work along with this great group of people here. If you need me, phone number's 454-9111, call me. I ain't sure you're, I'll call you back. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. District 3, Commissioner Orville Blackburn.
I'm Orville Blackburn and I just want to help everybody in the county. Just give me a call. I appreciate everybody that voted for me. Thank you.
Uh, we, Sherry, what is the number in the Commissioner's office? 6308. So if anyone needs to get ahold of the commissioners, you can call 606-432-6308. There's a secretary in that office. And Ms. Skaggs can take your message. She'll be happy to pass that on to the commissioner, whichever one, whichever commissioner you want to talk to or the one in your home area, because as you know, they represent the whole county. And so the office hours are- the whole county. And, uh, so the office hours are 8:30 to 5:00. If you need to get ahold of the Commissioners, you can reach them, uh, and she'll be able to give you their county cell phones, uh, if she can't handle the problem, or put you through to the judge's office, either one. Um, I think we're going to have a good relationship. Uh, I think we all share the common goal of trying to move the county forward and saving money, and, uh, and, uh, my big thing is making sure we don't have to raise taxes. A lot of people are struggling right now, a lot of businesses are struggling, and we can avoid raising taxes like we did the last four years. I'm going to think that's a, that's a good thing. Um, gentlemen, you all have anything else to add?
Judge, I got one more thing. I forgot. Our employees work hard in this county, and people from a garbage truck to the custodians, thank them for all they do, and be patient with us with this cold weather, and us, new ones getting elected, we're, you know, we're the new kids on the block, and it's going to take a little bit for us to get seated into this, so just bear with us. Be patient with us. Thank you, y'all.
Any employees have anything?
I found this little thing. I wear box, so there's a lid here. Uh, it was lit?
Somebody left a reading glass in the case.
Hi.
All right. Um, next court meeting, there will be a special meeting next, uh, Friday at 10:00 AM, uh, to address some business, and then the following meeting will be a regular meeting on January 17th at 10:00 AM. Uh, we won't have the first evening, uh, regular meeting till February. Uh, so again, uh, Mr. Pugh, look forward to working with you. Mr. Howard, look forward to working with you. Uh, congratulations to all the employees. I think we've got a great group of employees. The county's worked hard. Um, we've got a lot of dedicated folks, and I want to just say I appreciate everyone and, uh, look forward to working with you all for the next four years. Chuck?
You remind everybody that solid waste is running late.
Okay.
We're a little bit late on this week.
Solid waste is running late, but we had to get everybody higher back before we could put them on the road, so they are running, uh, on the normal Monday schedule. And, uh, a lot of people were still upset that they didn't work Christmas, but, you know, we can't expect our folks to work Christmas holiday, and, uh, they are working, uh, the New Year holiday, uh, even though the courthouse and state offices are closed, federal offices are closed today. Our solid waste crews are still working, and we want to thank them. So, uh, with that being said, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Spears if he would come up, do the benediction, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you again, Lord, thanking you for the decisions made here today, and Lord, uh, just praising your name for, uh, the way the county has moved forward, and just pray your blessings upon it to continue to do so. Uh, Lord, we ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Is there any other business to come before the court, before we, uh, entertain the motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.